Good evening and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on October 16, 2025. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting was given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on October 1st, 2025. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We'll have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not for the board will be muted. Mr. Lesko, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Mr. Bodigheimer?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mayor Frida? Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Perlmutter? Mr. Taylor? Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
And Chair Wilson?
Here.
You have a chair. Cora, Madam Chair?
Thanks. Announcements. Justin?
The only announcement I have is it is likely the regular scheduled meeting next week will be canceled. We'll probably know by the end of this meeting. You know, and if we do, basically, we, this is a special meeting, so we basically just flip-flop them in October.
Okay. So that would make our next meeting November, assuming next week is canceled, November 6th?
That's the next scheduled one, yes.
Yep, okay. I don't think we have any subcommittee reports, do we? Nope, okay. Well, next up, let's see.
Madam Chair, could I?
Yes.
Could I just make a comment before we get started?
Sure.
Different subject entirely. There's lots of signs around town saying, "All for Princeton, save historic Princeton," which is basically saying, certainly save historic Princeton and probably.
Defend. Defend historic Princeton and Princeton for all.
Right.
Just for the record. I know what you're talking about, though. I just wanted to be clear about it.
I think generally people perceive them as supporting, opposing what the seminary is proposing on the seminary site, which is fine. And if board members want to put a sign on their property doing so, I mean, they're certainly entitled to do so. But I think if they do, it raises a specter of a conflict of interest, and I'd be prepared to rule, absent any other circumstance I'm not aware of, that it would be a conflict for them. So I just wanted to advise the board of that.
Okay.
And so that would mean they would have to recuse from consideration of the site plan?
Yes, of the same when it comes back to us.
Just to clarify, there's two different signs. The defend historic Princeton is against the seminary, and then Princeton for all is for that development.
Well, that's, yeah. That's certainly the perception.
Right.
And I'm sure that some would argue that it's, that there's more nuance and et cetera, but but what Mr. Muller is saying is that we need to be, as board members, who will hear the final, you know, the application for the seminary property redevelopment, when it does come back to us, and of course redevelopment plan is approved, and I believe the town has a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement, I'm not sure whether it's MOU or MOA with the with the property owner, et cetera. So it's moving forward, but when it does come back to us for its last review, if members of the board have one or the other of the signs in their yard, there could be a perception of a bias one way or the other, and thus, you should either be prepared to recuse or not put, not put either of those signs in front of your house.
Yeah, and that's unfortunate, that would be the case, but that's certainly the most cautious approach. And when it eventually comes back to us, we don't want members of the public saying, "But you had a sign that said blank, and you're obviously biased." So I mean, we want to avoid that. And we want to avoid, you know, that conflict potential.
Okay. All right, thanks for opining on that proactively, Jerry. Appreciate that. If anybody's got any follow-up questions for Jerry, you know, don't hesitate to give him a call, or Justin, or something.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and if I could just add to that, clearly, this whole situation is, continues to develop with, every time I drive down the street, there's a new different sign that's very clearly directly related to a certain thing, and then there's ones that are maybe, possibly related. So I think what our council is saying is kind of the higher view, but these things are going to continue to kind of, it appears, change and become complex or less complex.
Council SEL, not Council CIL, which is not.
Yes. Exactly, thank you.
And certainly.
Good, okay.
Signs that raise no issue. We support free speech freedom. There's not such a sign of ransom. They put it up. Fine, good. Good for you. No conflict there.
No conflict with political campaign signs or anything like that. I mean, that's no, they're right. Nothing. Good, okay. All right, thank you for that. So is Carrie Phillip in the house?
She is.
Oh, please bring her over. We have a proclamation. Honoring Carrie Phillip for service to the Planning Board of Princeton. Here she is. Carrie, can you activate your camera? That's not her typical mode. When she's with the board, she usually does that. There you are. Hi. Hi. You look well rested. Well, I would like to read this this resolution into the record.
Thank you.
By May. Whereas Carrie Phillip served the people of Princeton for more than 30 years in a variety of positions and within the planning office for almost all of that time. And whereas Ms. Phillip's dedication and expertise proved invaluable to the Planning Board of Princeton, including ably navigating and adapting throughout extraordinarily challenging times, including the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Carrie's responsiveness, integrity, and work ethic ensured that board members and the public had the information and resources needed to make informed decisions. And whereas in recent years, and with planning office staff stretched thin, Carrie persevered through periods of very heavy workload, juggling many land use applications along with tasks associated with the comprehensive update of Princeton's municipal master plan. And whereas the board wishes to express its heartfelt gratitude to Carrie Phillip for a job well done, and appreciation for the diligence and warmth she brought to her work, therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board of Princeton recognizes, honors, and expresses its profound gratitude for all Carrie has done for and on behalf of the Planning Board of Princeton. And be it further resolved that the board extends best wishes for a long, happy, healthy retirement. Thank you, Carrie, so much, and I'm sorry you couldn't tell October to make this actually happen with your schedule and our schedules and all of that stuff.
I appreciate this. I just want to clarify one thing. When I started, I started in the planning office. So the entire time, I have been in planning.
Oh, I thought you, oh, well, we'll need to amend this.
If you don't mind. Yes.
Oh, that is my error.
Nope, no problem.
So.
I don't mean to, you know, interject anything like that, but.
No, I am very glad, because, you know, this is for posterity. You're going to, yes, you're like great grandchildren will need to know the truth.
Yes.
Yes, we will, we will change so that it reads, and within the planning office for the entire time, or something like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, Carrie steps up and keeps me between the ditches. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no.
I cannot change. It's still here, so.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm glad that you could join us tonight for this, and once again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And you're on call for, when somebody presses the fire alarm, right?
In a few months, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Now you get to go have a life on this Thursday night. Next up, we have four sets of minutes. All from regular meetings. The first set under consideration is from October 17, 2024. Are there any?
Didn't we do these last meeting, I thought?
Oh, excuse me. Are these from, are these the same?
They are.
Uh-oh.
I was looking through the thread, and they were attached to the very first email that was before last meeting.
Let me double-check. I'm not sure. I sent the last email last Friday. But in both meetings, we had four sets, so.
Well, right, and I remember the last time, the last, there were three from 2024 and one from 2025, but I think the 2025 one in the last meeting was the reorganization meeting, the January or whatever, right?
Yeah.
And I think the minutes were from June and July, maybe? Of 24?
Yes, we had June 6, September 5, September 19 of 2024, and January 9 of 2025 last time. This time, we have October 17, November 14, and December 19 of 2024, and then February 6 of 2025. So all four of them are separate. Unless we sent the wrong files?
Well, so I'll just say, I mean, I'm looking at my thread, and the, they were attached, yeah, to an email on the 10th. So I guess that means they were subsequent to the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I didn't have a chance to review them, because I mistakenly thought we had talked about them last time, so I have to abstain from voting on them.
Okay, did others, did enough others get a chance to review them to, for us to take action? Oh, and I saw your hand go up.
I did.
Okay, and as did I. So let's see, would, one, two, three, four. Nat, are you willing to vote?
I'm willing to vote.
Okay, that gives us five, so let's go ahead and let's go ahead and do this unless David or Alvin, unless you have an objection.
Not at all.
Okay. Owen, since you raised your hand, is that, are you moving the first set?
I will move the first set of minutes.
Okay, the minutes from October 17, 2024.
I can second that. I can second that.
Thank you, Paula B. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes from November 14, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Paula Venuka, seconded by Claudia Wilson Anderson. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, next is December 19, 2024.
I'll move.
Regular meeting. Thanks, Owen. Is there a second?
I'll second, Claudia.
Well, you spoke. Claudia raised her hand. Thank you, Paula B., I was seconded by Paula Venuka. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and then finally, February 6, 2025.
I'll move.
Thank you, Claudia. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Nat. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So we'll have four sets of minutes. And we're caught up at most, if not all, of our regular and special meetings. All right, I think my understanding is that the resolutions on tonight's agenda are being tabled. Is that correct, Mr. Lesko?
That's correct, Madam Chair. We're still working with the applicant on getting the language finalized.
Okay. Then on to the application. Tonight's application is from Princeton Public Schools. It is for Community Park Elementary School. It's a conditional use authorization, 372 Witherspoon Street, Block 6902, Lot 3. And this is file number P2525-685CO. Mr. Muller, can you speak to proper notice and jurisdiction?
Yes, Madam Chair. We decided to treat this at the last session, when we went from the first application to the second application, as one, as one application, one hearing. Notice was proper, then we continued it to tonight, right?
Yeah.
We continued it to tonight, but we have three separate hearings, or we have three separate applications, three separate noticing.
Okay, yeah, the notice was proper.
Yeah.
And the jurisdiction is proper. And we decided that the last session, on my advice, that we didn't have to re swear, swear everybody in, et cetera, and they were all still under oath.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Let's see. Justin, you want to get us started, then we'll turn to the schools?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm getting a little feedback now.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Okay, now, good, thank you. I will keep this brief, but mostly reiterate what I said prior to the last meeting, where the board reviewed conditional use approval requests at Littlebrook Elementary School and at the Princeton Middle School. Then I'll hand it over to the schools again to present their application, which tonight is at Community Park Elementary School on Witherspoon Street. Once again, like last time, I'm going to refer to the Planning Board as the board and the Princeton Public Schools as the schools, instead of the Board of Ed, just to try to keep things clear. And also, like I said last time, the history of these applications is that the schools came to the board for a capital review of the proposal you'll see tonight. A little over a year ago, I think about 13 months ago, at this point, the board provided comments back to the schools at that time, and the schools sent in what they needed to the State Department of Education prior to a referendum that was ultimately approved by the voters of Princeton. The schools are back tonight for a conditional use approval, as they were about a month ago for those other two ones. This time, it's for improvements to Community Park School, and that is, the requirement is there because a school is a conditional use in the residential zone it is located in, in this case, on Witherspoon Street. The schools are exempt from the formal site plan review, though the board obviously needs to see what the schools are proposing in order to determine if the application meets the conditional use standards of Section T10B 321 of the municipal ordinance. Here are those standards again in full. Quote, "In making its decision on an application for approval of a conditional use, the Planning Board shall take no action which will substantially impair the intent or purpose of this article. The board may attach such terms and conditions to an approval of such application as in its judgment will preserve such public good or such intent or purpose, and shall be guided by the following principles: A, the local need for the proposed facilities and whether or not the same is adequately served by existing facilities within feasible distance of the area to be served; B, the existence of nuisance factors and whether or not adequate shielding by way of landscaping or distance from the nearest property line is provided to minimize any such factors; C, the effects of the amount of traffic which the proposed use may reasonably generate upon existing streets, the safety of nearby uses such as schools or other places of congregation or public service, the peace and quiet of nearby property, and the use of public right-of-way for parking, service, or any other purpose," end quote. For a school use, our ordinance also requires that the site conforms to the standard set forth in Section 300 of the State Board of Education's 1969 Guide for Schoolhouse Planning and Construction, which was included with the joint report that land use staff wrote on this application, and was online and in your packets. In addition to asking the board to address the standards of the conditional use principles that I just read, and the standards of that guide for schoolhouse planning and construction, our report also had comments relating to improvements on municipal land and right-of-way that the schools have proposed, and traffic recommendations in general, like we saw last time, probably a pretty similar show tonight, based on the materials that we received. I will note, one of the improvements proposed is to create a bike path between Community Park School and the municipal pool and parking lot, so it would run from Witherspoon essentially to Community Park. This has been discussed for some time now between the municipality and local biking and parents groups. And there is also one very noteworthy thing that you will not see on this application tonight, and that was the school's proposal to add a paved parking lot in the green space between the driveway at Community Park School and the former Packet Building at 300 Witherspoon, where Homestead and Capital Health currently are. We're grateful that the schools listened to the board and staff's comments to keep that as a green space with trees. I think I could end my part there for now. Mr. Bridger, Mr. Purcell, and Mr. Anasike are here as well. And I should mention, there is a traffic engineering report from Mr. Anasike, separate from our land use report. And as I said last time, the capital review you heard over a year ago was more of the planning exercise, whereas this conditional use approval is more of the engineering and detailed side. So, Madam Chair, that's all I have at this time, unless there are any questions. Thank you.
You're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. It was a good segue, actually, especially if I had had my audio working, to ask Mr. Purcell, since this is more of a nuts and bolts details kind of thing, is there anything that you want to draw the board's attention to before we hear from the applicant? Any?
Well, I'll, yeah, I think I know where you're going with that. First of all, as the planning director has noted, the pathway extension to connect Community Park School to Witherspoon Street has been discussed with with the schools, and we're very happy to see their ability to to provide that. The Recreation Department is very excited about the ability for that connection to finally see a light of day. And the second thing is, I understand that, and I believe it was in our municipal engineer's memo to the school district about parking, and that parking has been resolved. We do have agreements that will be in place to provide for overflow parking if there was any concern about that.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Let's see, Mr. Croker, are you taking the lead on behalf of the schools?
Yes, good, good evening, I should say. Just to, if I heard correctly, or the, is everybody still sworn in, or do we need to introduce people? We were here September 25, and I mean, I'm happy to do that. I just don't know what, I don't want to waste time.
No, we don't have to do it. Same people as last time?
Yes, everybody, the only, the only person I do not, I did see Dr. LaSousa had signed in. I saw him. I don't see him now, but, I mean, in no particular order, I'm just going on the order of my, the squares on my screen here. We have George Doofy, the boards architect, FTHD Architects, Beth Kenderdine, woods engineer from Edwards Engineering Group, Patrick Downey, which, the Woods Traffic Engineer from Dynamic Traffic, Daniel Shetoni, also from FDHD Architects, also architect. Mr. Andrew Harris, the board's business administrator and board secretary is here. And that, everybody that I just announced was here with us on the 25th. Like I said, I don't see Dr. LaSousa, but I did see.
Brandon, if I can apologize for Dr. LaSousa, he had to step away due to a family emergency.
Okay, no problem. All right, understood. Then it sounds like we can, we can continue. I just didn't want, I didn't know if he was having, I did see him, you know, a few minutes ago, so I didn't know if he was having connectivity problems or anything, but.
Brandon, is somebody named Deandrea Battle, is that one of your people, or is she?
Adria is a planning office staff.
Our planning office?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yes, she soon will be, well.
She is near. She is near, Jerry.
Yes. Yes, welcome, Deadrea. Sorry to put you on the spot there. You don't need to do anything. We're all good, Jerry.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so I, again, like last time, I think your planner, Mr. Lesko, did a really good job of introducing the applications. This is very similar to the last time on September 25, when we talked about the middle school and Littlebrook. We're here again for conditional use approval, but this time for Community Park, that we ran out of time last time, but the board did take jurisdiction and announced at the last meeting, so we're here tonight for, similar to last time, to seek that approval, to allow the board to move further with the referendum projects that are planned. As Mr. Lesko mentioned, we were here, or we had appeared, I think, last September, and as he mentioned, that Community Park initially had two components, but we did decide not to move forward with one based on the board's feedback, and, you know, understood, understanding there were some issues with that, but we are here for some, to seek approval for additions and expansions that we are planning to move forward with, and again, like last time, we're here only for that aspect, that the new additions and, you know, the expansions that, given that these are existing sites, and and there's already a school there, so I don't want to take up too much time, but I think all my comments from last time are pretty similar, so I think similarly, maybe just I could ask maybe George or Dan to give maybe a brief just overview, and then we'll move to Beth to talk about the plans that she worked so hard to prepare, and then go to Patrick, and he can discuss some of the traffic, but so unless the board has any questions, at this time, I think maybe I'll turn to George and ask him just to give the board a quick overview of what we're planning at Community Park.
Mr. Doofy, do you want to share your screen, or are you going to wait for Ms. Kenderdine to do that?
I think Beth can share her screen and through the site plans. I really don't have a whole lot to say. I know you've seen the plans, you know, but again, in keeping with what was done at Littlebrook and in middle school, you know, this idea of these compact additions that are, you know, respectful of the site, okay, and, you know, the programmatic needs of the school to, you know, to do a lot of things, including increasing connectivity within the buildings, okay, making, therefore, some security enhancements as well, enhancing outdoor space, and obviously addressing some of the school's capacity and. And, and, and obviously addressing some of the school's capacity and programmatic needs at the same time. So we just tried to be respectful of those sites, tried to make those compact additions and, uh, you know, just tried to, uh. Overall respond to what the programmatic requirements were. That's, that's pretty much all I have to say unless there's questions.
Any questions for Mr. Doofy? Okay, thank you. Ms. Kendrdine?
You are, there you go. Thank you. Sorry. I managed to share my screen, but not to unmute myself. Baby steps, um, like, so, so as, uh, George said. The, the site plan essentially shows two building additions to the rear of Community Park School. So obviously this is Community Park School, um, there's parking along the frontage. This is the pool site in the back of the school, um, this driveway essentially, uh, faces Geo Avenue. Um, and we're proposing, uh, two building additions to the rear. Um, sort of an extension on this building wing and then a large building addition that will create. A, a bit of an open courtyard between, uh, the existing and proposed building. Um, in addition to that, we are proposing.
Beth, if I can interrupt for a second, could you identify, um, what sheet this is from, this is from the plan set? Could you identify?
I'm sorry, it's sheet C zero point zero.
Sheet, she, say again?
C dash zero point zero.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, of course.
I think if it, if it helps, I think it's the first, the first sheet or the cover sheet of, of what was submitted, I think.
Yeah, we called it key plan, but it's essentially a cover sheet. Um, so as, uh, pointed out by Mr. Purcell. We're proposing an eight foot wide asphalt bike lane between Community Park and the pool site. Um, to essentially connect from Geo Avenue across the Community Park property. Um, that bike path, uh, will be partially on the pools property, partially on Community Park's property. Um, that was essentially to try and maintain as much vegetation as possible, there's a couple of large trees there. That we're trying to avoid, um, so that's why the, the pathway sort of, um. Uh, snakes around a little bit like it does. Um, so then in order to accommodate this bike path, we're proposing to reconfigure. The, the walking path around the, the playground area at Community Park. Um, and we're introducing a new mulched playground right behind the, the new building additions. And of course, um, a bio retention basin in order to, um. Mitigate runoff from the new building additions and the pavement that we're proposing. Um, so if you'd like, I can. To move ahead to. The existing conditions plan, unfortunately, it's, it's kind of broken up. Because of the size of the sheet, but this is the, the most of the main campus. Um, so you can see there's.
And what sheet is that?
This is sheet C, C dash one point zero.
Thank you.
It's labeled, it's labeled as existing conditions.
Existing conditions, yes.
Thank you.
Of course, yeah, so you can see there's, there's one small playground here, there's the Gaga pit. This is the existing building, um, and the existing courtyard. Moving on to sheet C point one, C dash one point one, which is also existing conditions. Um, and this shows the areas that, that wouldn't fit on the first shit, first sheet, excuse me, so, um. The, the property line between the, the school and the, the pool. Is approximately in this location, and then this is sort of the match line that extends down towards the right of way. Um. That's, gonna skip through the demolition plans. Um, so this is, I'm now on sheet C dash three point O, um, called the, the site layout plan. Um, essentially just a more detailed plan of what we show on the key map. Um, if you zoom in, you can see that the two building additions, the, uh, mulched playground. New walkways that will connect all of the doors to the playgrounds, everything will be code compliant. Um, and ADA accessible, you'll see we have ramps wherever we have stairs. Um, and. Oh. Um, and then this next sheet, C dash three point one, uh, is a continuation of the site layout plan, and that shows. The new bike path along the, uh, the property line. So you can see these existing playgrounds are going to remain in place. We're just rerouting the walkway around so that we can put a fence between the school site. And the bike path in order to provide site, uh, security for the school. Um, I think I will. This is the, this next plan is the site grading plan, it's sheet C dash four point O. Um, and I'm bringing it up just so you can see the footprint of the bio retention basin. Uh, that we're proposing next to the playground, so that bio retention basin. Um, is compensating not just for the impervious coverage of the new building additions. And the walkways, but also for the bike path between the school site and the pool. So this is just the grading plan for the, it's C dash four point one. It's a continuation of the site grading plan showing the grading for the proposed bike path. Um, that's, uh, essentially the scope of the project. One thing I do want to point out because it came up at the last meeting is that. There will be a fence around the bio retention basin. Um, I think that's something that, that people were concerned about. For the, the other two, um, applications, hold on one second, I thought I would just bring up this site plan, so, um. If you'd like, I can go through the comments provided by. The planning office. Uh, unless somebody has questions that you'd like me to answer?
I think going through the comments is a great idea, just, um, you know, quickly.
Okay, um, I'm on page four. Of, uh, the planning board memorandum, memory, memorandum, excuse me, dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, under the additional comments. The first comment is regarding the shared use path. Um, and it requires approval by the municipal council, so we will reach out to, um. Honestly, I guess I'll, I'll reach out to the municipal engineer, um, and see how, how we go about getting that.
Yeah, I think Jim Purcell, um. Uh, i- is probably managing this, I'm sorry, I can't see him on my screen right now, but, um, but yeah.
Actually, Mad- Madam Chair, I'm, I'm the land use engineer at this board, I'm not the assistant municipal engineer, so. That would be, that would be Deanna Stock, then they can.
Okay, directly to.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to her.
Okay, great.
Um, the. The, the second comment is, is regarding the, the maneuvering of the path around trees. So, um, they suggest that we consult with the municipal arborist. I don't think, um, anybody at the schools will have an issue with that, we can. Adjust the width or the, the path of the bike path accordingly in the field if we need to. Um, I think the most important part to the schools, the schools is just that we maintain. The fence along their side of the, of the path so that they don't expose any children to security risks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the comment number three is again regarding consultation with the municipal arborist. For any, um, impact to the trees. Um, again, we're, we're doing our best to protect the existing trees that are there. Um, unfortunately, some are gonna have to get demolished, but we do have an extensive landscape plan. Um, that we've worked with the schools on, and the addition to the landscaping plan, they've also have. Uh, trees being planted under a grant. Um, outside of the area of our project, we, um. So there are, there, there's gonna be significant landscaping across the site.
And I think, Doctor, nice, I just, I was just gonna come and I, my, my recollection is I think he said the grant was for ninety two trees if I, if I.
Yeah.
Call.
It, there's a, there's a lot of trees going on, uh, going on all three of the schools, and we coordinated with. The schools when they were putting together that, that grant application. To put those trees outside the areas we would be impacting, so. So we have landscaping proposed as part of this project, and they also have additional landscaping going in under that grant.
Now, the, the number, is that for all three site, uh, schools, is that just for Community Park?
No, that, that was for all three, my, my.
For all three.
Ninety two is for six sites, it's for the six building sites.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, Andrew, that much.
No problem.
Um, right, I am moving on. Uh, comment number four was about coordination of the temporary fence with the Princeton Recreation Department. Um, that's not a problem. Um, comment number five, I will defer to Patrick Downey, that is regarding the, uh, traffic recommendations. Um, comment number six is regarding the stormwater management system. Um, as correctly noted, the, the system is designed to meet the requirements of. The New Jersey Stormwater Management Rules, um, and it will also be reviewed in detail by the D N R Canal Commission. Um. Comment number seven, um, I think. Mo- I'm not entirely sure most of these apply, um, we did speak, I think. Briefly about perv- pervious pavement. Um, during the last meeting, and I think I, I made my position pretty clear on that, but we can, we could talk about it again if you'd like. Um, there is no, um, new lighting proposed as part of this, no new site lighting. The only lighting, uh, will be on the school building for safety reasons. And the, this advocate is, we're not seeking LEED certification. That was comment number eight. So, um, I can now. Open up to any board member questions? Or would you prefer to go to your, um, experts, your professionals?
Um, well, thank you for that, uh, are there questions from? From board, board members, Mr. Cohen?
I just wanted to ask, I feel like when we did the capital review last year that there were. Um, there was some discussion about fences that would, uh, limit access to the courtyard, the new courtyard that's being created. I'm not seeing them on the plans, but I was, wanted to ask if fences were going in or not.
Yes, yes, there will be a fence located right here between the two buildings, um, with, uh, gates. Uh, for access to the courtyard, so yes, there will be limited access to the courtyard.
Okay, well, one, just to add to that comment, Beth, uh, that gate will be an egress gate. We, we, we need to get people out of the courtyard, okay, because by, that's a room. And we're also taking exiting from some stair towers that are dumping into the court, into that area right now, so those will have, uh. There'll be ex- security exit gates with panic bars on them and all, they'll be secured from the outside.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks, um, Mr. O'Donnell, and then Ms. Nuka.
Thank you, uh, since you brought it up, is your, uh, stance still that pervious, pervious, uh, pavement on the walkways is not? Uh, going to be implemented?
No. No, I, I, um, I, I see very limited functionality. In pervious pavement, um, I think because you need a large section of stone underneath, I don't think it's very cost effective. For this particular instance, the soils aren't even permeable, so it doesn't do much good to me, I would have to collect the runoff anyway. And, and, and pipe it into some kind of stormwater management system. Um, really, the D E P looks at it less like, like a stormwater quantity control than a quality control. So, um, and in this case, I don't need to provide stormwater quality treatment for the, for the runoff because it's not motor vehicle loaded pavement.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Nuka?
Um, just, uh, I guess two quick questions. One, um, is how deep is the bio retention basin, uh, that you have next to the, um, new playground?
Hold on, I think it's about four feet deep. Yes.
And so there'll be some kind of fence around it?
Um, yes.
And how high will that fence be?
Um. We have it spec'd at the moment at four feet high, because we don't want it to be, look like a big cage on the site, um. So it'll be four feet high and there'll be access gates for maintenance.
And, and then, um, similarly along the proposed bike path, you'll have a fence along the entire stretch. Will that be, will that be a higher fence for privacy?
I think that's, I think that's a six foot or a, or a seven foot fence, we're matching existing.
Okay, thank you.
And, and you would indicate during the last hearing that the, the fence would be locked and it would only be open. For access purposes.
Mm-hmm, of course, yes.
Rain garden fence, we're back to, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, well, and I, I, uh. Going back to pervious pavement for a minute, and I, I know your, your plan, you know, meets the requirement, then I understand you won't use perme- permeable or pervious pavement. Here, um. Uh, there are some really, really successful installations, uh, many of them for parking stalls, um. As well as for pathways, uh, i- in the state of New Jersey, and so I just, um, I, I hope that. You'll, you know, continue to at least take a look at it and, and, uh, you know, for, for other projects that you work on, it can be. Um, you know, very effective, it can manage a, a really huge amount of stormwater, um, you know.
I have specked it before, but it's last resort in my, in my toolbox.
All right.
But, uh, I'm keeping an open mind.
Good.
Oh, and I.
It's all, all we can ask.
Yeah. Um, it's the, the fence along the bike path will be eight feet high.
Eight feet, okay. Um, I guess I have a question that, um. It, it was not really a question so much as a comment when you are working with, um. Uh, Deanna Stockton on the, um, the pathway. Uh, I assume that, you know. Uh, I, in fact, I, 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 I know that she'll have, um, guidance about making the appropriate connections to the west. And to the park and to the east, you know, onto, um, or across Witherspoon Street, and I just, um. You know, I'm saying from a planning perspective, it's really important that those connections be, um. You know, simple and effective. Um, and that we're, you know, we're delivering, uh, the people who are using that path, uh, into. You know, into, in, into neighboring properties in a way that makes a lot of sense, and I'm sure that Deanna has. Put a lot of thought into that, and I, I saw, I see that Jim has activated his camera, I don't know whether you want to speak to that at all, Jim?
This is, it's being coordinated with the current design of the improvements to Community Park South.
Great, perfect, thanks.
And at, at the other end, it's like right opposite Geo, uh, which connects to the Geo path. Which is the ideal connection to the schools.
Right, that's, that's what I was, yeah, that's what I, I hoped, and that's what it looked like to me, but good. So there's already a raised crosswalk right, right, right at, um.
Yeah, I think it's right here.
Right at Conti's, and, yeah. Okay. Um, uh, Mr. Cohen, did you have a different?
I, yeah, I did, I just, um, you know, I, I, I want to add my appreciation for the, the bike path. Um, I think it's such an important part of our safe routes to school, um. safe routes to school. Um, so it's not just for the municipality, it really is for the schools, for the older school kids and who live in the western whole, you know, half of town, actually. Um, the one question that I do have is I feel like there's been a little bit of concern, uh, when this has been discussed in the past about uh, the safety of the bike path fenced in on both sides uh, after dark. And, um, the idea that there's no new lighting proposed obviously suggests there's no lighting for this bike path. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that. Um, you know, I don't want to be making a request that's cost generative for the schools, but if the municipality wanted to, I mean, obviously this is right up against municipal property. Um, you know, if there were a way for us to assist with getting electricity to the area and, you know, sort of putting the lights on our property, but sort of doing it as part of the construction. Because as long as we're doing the work, it seems to make sense to do this together with that. Um, I wanted to raise the question is whether that could be possible and coordinated and Jim, y- you should probably um, turn on your camera again.
I'm, I'm trying to be, uh, you know, very selective and my hats. Um, I, I think that's appropriate, uh, and I think that it really would have to be part of the discussion of the Recreation Department and, and what they, uh, what they desire. Um, the major desire here for this pathway was for a connection for Community Park South to be able to access from our parking area and, and Witherspoon Street. Um, so I, I think that's a continuing discussion, Councilman Cohen, that, that is worthy of having. Uh, I don't think it needs to be placed as a condition on the school district to work with us, but uh, I think that, um, lighting from, uh, municipal property is probably, uh, something that can be accomplished.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. That's, that's important. Um, okay, any other questions from planning board members or staff before we move on to public comment? Not seeing any, so.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Uh, I think that, uh, the schools still need to discuss their traffic plans as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself, I apologize.
Patrick Downey to, to maybe speak to the traffic concerns before we move.
Good. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Pat Downey with Dynamic Traffic again. Uh, I recognize I remain sworn from the last meeting that we were here. And I guess, Beth, if you don't mind, I maybe just asked you to put that key plan, uh, zero. No, it's fine, just so everyone has something to look at and discuss various parts of the plan. Um, so very similar to the last two presentations you heard me give, um, just in a little outline of our process. Um, we obviously were brought on and started with meetings with the school to understand what their needs were. Uh, performed our own site observations while school was in session before the end of last school year. Uh, reviewed the proposed plans and then have, uh, initiated correspondence with the municipal engineering staff to discuss some of the improvements we identified that could be made within the municipal right of way of some of the surrounding streets. Uh, within the memorandum we submitted as part of the application package, uh, we summarized first the trip generation of this proposed project. Uh, obviously with this additional space, uh, in the building comes some additional capacity for more students. Um, as I did mention in the last meeting too, that additional student increase is something that's really coming either way. Uh, due to population growth throughout the municipality, it's not proposed quote unquote in the same sense as most land development applications that the board hears. Uh, but even so, looking at what additional trips would be generated using IT rates for, uh, the student capacity increase for these expansions, it still doesn't rise to the level of what would be significant. Uh, which is what DOT would define as a hundred peak hour trips. Uh, and again, a trip is a one-way movement, so, uh, fifty parents, you know, dropping off and then departing in the morning, for example, would be a hundred trips. And it falls below that even. Um, that's partially due to the fact that a lot of the, uh, existing student population does use the bus over half the students. Uh, which is great. We love to see that. Uh, and that is expected to carry on to any additional students that would come as part of the capacity increase. Uh, in terms of some of the proposed improvements, we did identify some on the streets and we have, uh, the September eighteenth memorandum from Deanna Stockton. Uh, regarding the municipality's review of those, uh, suggested improvements and what they've agreed to implement at this time. Uh, there are three, so that I'll just read into the record for everyone's reference. Uh, first, there is some shared parking occurring, uh, just left off the page at the Community Park South parking lot, which has some spaces designated for use by school staff. Um, the agreement was, uh, most of the existing signage for school parking in that lot is faded and unreadable. The municipality where, will add or replace the parking signage. Uh, number two was regarding, uh, the exit from the school property down to John Street at the bottom left of the image on your screen. Uh, specifically regarding, uh, some enhancement to really highlight that that is a one-way, uh, egress from the school property that you cannot continue from John Street North into the school property there. Uh, the municipality will review allowable signage and pavement markings to further enhance messaging to the public roadway ends at the northern end of John Street. Uh, and lastly, uh, at the eastern side of the property against, uh, Witherspoon Street, where the bus activity occurs today. Uh, the municipality will consider installation of bus-only pavement markings to further enhance the designation of the roadway shoulder as a bus area. Uh, moving on to the site parking as part of our observations last school year, uh, we quantified the existing parking demand, uh, midday, once everyone had arrived for the day. Um, and found an existing parking demand of about seventy-four vehicles, uh, at the peak time. With the capacity increase, there's up to, uh, twelve staff additional anticipated. So even if we conservatively assume that each of those staff, uh, brings another personal vehicle, we're looking at a parking demand of about seventy-six spaces. When you, uh, consider the parking spaces provided in the school's lot and the ones available to them in the Park South parking lot, there's a total available supply of ninety-four spaces. So ninety-four supply versus a demand of seventy-six. So there's more than enough parking, uh, to accommodate the project even with this expansion. Uh, in terms of bicycle parking, similar to the last two, um, applications that you heard at the last meeting, uh, we would agree to install whatever bicycle parking is necessary to comply with the ordinance requirement. It's a bit of a complicated calculation, but we would work that out as part of resolution compliance and ensure that we are compliant. And, um, in fact, we may go above and beyond that. We've seen a lot of bicycle activity, uh, in each of these schools, which we want to continue to encourage. So if, um, the school feels it's appropriate, we might actually go above and beyond that minimum requirement. And lastly, I'll just mention, we received the September twenty-fourth memorandum from the Board's Traffic Consultant, uh, Bowman. Uh, they asked for some additional information, which we provided in writing prior to the last meeting. Um, overall, we take no issue with those comments, uh, we believe they've been addressed. And that is all I have in the way of direct, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Um, questions from board members or staff? Claudia Wilson Anderson?
Uh, as it relates to the period during construction, what kind of disruption would you expect and what would the timing of construction be as it relates to construction and, um, detours on Witherspoon Street or pickup and drop offs at school?
Um, George, our architect, I think might be able to provide some more information. Really, a lot of the construction is in, is building related, so I'll, I'll kick that up, George.
So, so as, right now, our plan is to enter the site really back in the existing loading area, which is right behind the cafeteria. Uh, that smaller cutout area, there's a fence there, a vehicle fence that keep locked right now. Our plan is to come in that way. Um, and to feed the construction project by driving around, uh, and restoring everything at the end. No impact expected to Witherspoon Street, no impact expected to the front parking or driveway loop. And more importantly, no impact is going to be expected to anything that's on the far western. I guess that's the western end where the, where the main playgrounds are. And Beth, maybe you can just blow that up a little bit and try to show you under. But the area where the pointer is right now will remain relatively intact. Uh, most of the impact we're, we're looking will be on the, uh, on the north end of the site towards where the additions will be, and then access path will be from that drive off of Witherspoon. There you go, right there. So that, it's, construction vehicles will access the site from, from that direction. And essentially, we're going to put a construction fence up, actually to keep the entire, you know, western end of the site isolated from the construction. So that's the plan right now.
Construction being, going on while school is in session?
Correct, yes, on the additions, that's correct.
Are there any precautions that need to be taken as it relates to the children and air quality?
All, all of the, all of the precautions that need to be taken will be taken, uh, during the construction. There will be, uh, contract requirements outlining what those, uh, requirements are that the contractor has to implement for dust control, noise control, access to the site, traffic, safety and all those things. And by the way, there's a construction manager also who will be on the site, uh, every day to make sure that those, uh, those things are, uh, taken care of by the contractor.
Thank you. Justin, let's go.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to mention for everyone's knowledge, um, because it was alluded to before. Uh, but the municipality has also been working for at least two years now, um, on a plan, um, to upgrade Community Park itself. Uh, and as part of that plan, uh, there was a, a planning process through the Recreation Department um, that I was involved in a few years ago and the PEC was involved in it, uh, as well as other groups. Um, but the decision was ultimately to keep things mostly where they are now. Um, you know, the parking lot where it is, the tennis courts where they are, um, the big loop essentially where it is. Uh, but to really just upgrade, uh, the park itself. So, uh, additional lighting, uh, more ADA accessibility, a bathroom, uh, finally. Um, so I, I just bring that up to, to say that as the schools are sprucing up Community Park School, um, the municipality is also sprucing up Community Park, um, neither of which are actually changing things in any, you know, way that's going to kind of completely change, uh, any of the way they've operated for decades now. Uh, but just to kind of, uh, improve those.
Great. Thank you. Um, Mr. Anosike. Victor, you're, there you go. Still, um, cannot hear you though. Although you're, um, it, it looks like your, uh, audio is active, but we cannot hear you. Can anybody else hear him?
No.
Okay.
I cannot.
It's always good to know it's not just me. So Victor, when this happens to me, I, I have to reboot.
When it happens to me, sorry, Madam Chair, um,
Yeah.
I, because this does happen to me a lot, um, I use the carrot next to the audio icon. And sometimes it, uh, you could change your microphone over there.
Ah, okay. Well, it looks like.
And if none of that works, Victor, you can text me and I'll tell the board what you were trying to say. Just to give another option in terms of logistics, I, I
Yeah.
Happened with clients before, um, I can like call them and put it on speakerphone in my office and then, um, do it that way. So I don't, I don't know if.
Okay, well, we'll figure out something. You're, you're right. We need to do a workaround. We may need to do a workaround. Thank you. Um, Owen O'Donnell, did you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Uh, uh, my question was really for, uh, the traffic engineer regarding the recommendation. Uh, at the, one, I think the recommendation was that the existing entrance to the building will be closed and moved to the west. Am I correct?
So one of the ideas being kicked around is to essentially, um, change which door that the students are brought in when they drop off at the front of the school property. Um, I, I think that'll be worked out with the school. If it, if it turns out that it continues to work fine as it does today, maybe they won't go forward with that. Uh, but it's just one idea we threw out there for consideration because sometimes it helps draw the drop-off activity further into the site. What you don't want is to have this nice long drop-off lane where only one or two spots ever get used because they're in the prime position. Uh, but it, it will only be implemented if necessary.
Um, not able to, could not hear what you just said, Mr. Anosike.
Victor, you're having ki- connectivity problems, I think. Uh, I, I know, I, I, if I may, um, he, uh, what, what the issue is, is that, uh, even today uh, with school drop-off, um, parent behavior is to, uh, drop off their children as close to the entrance as possible. Um, when they pull into the driveway, um, and, uh, the, the idea is that the school district should be looking at, um, changing the behavior of the parents to move the drop-off area further down the drive closer to John Street and, um, you know, that way, get get vehicles off of Witherspoon Street more quickly. Um, and, uh, I think that the school district has indicated that they're, they're looking at, uh, onsite traffic control uh, to a, a greater de- degree and that potentially means having the children at the first thing in the morning enter through a more westerly, uh, um, entrance. Is that, did I, did I encapsulate that correctly, Victor? Shake, nod your head or is that where you were going?
Exactly that.
Breaking up a little bit, but I, you can give it a shot. Yeah, no, that's not working, sorry. Um, while you troubleshoot, um, Ms. Nuka?
Um, thank you. Uh, so first of all, I just want to commend, um, the thought that went into the traffic management plan, um, and I appreciate, um, that you are considering providing, um, significant amount of bike parking. I think it's really important to encourage uh, more folks who can to, to encourage more schoolchildren to use their bikes, um, to come to school. Uh, the, um, and so if you can provide additional bike parking, um, you know, that's one step towards kind of, um, reinforcing that message. And then I, just in terms of the, the traffic management and parent behavior, this is an issue that we see across, um, other schools as well, at Littlebrook, uh, in particular, um, as well as Community Park. Um, so there has to be, I think maybe some more, um, direct messaging by the district, by the PTOs on that front. I mean, that's kind of out of the planning board's purview to try to shift parent behavior, but that's definitely something that the district and the schools can do. Um, and just explaining to parents to, um, if their kids can't walk or bike, um, and it car is the only option that they just need to, there are places to drop them off and it doesn't have to be directly in the front door. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Nat Bodikheim?
I just wanted to say this is an issue in a lot of different places. I mean, first off, in the movies where everyone parks directly in front of where they want to go, but in it, you know, in transit, you know, in transit kiss and ride parking lots, people do exactly the same thing. I mean, it's, it's, if you're gonna do this, it's gonna have to be designed, like you have to. If you don't, uh, people, it, it, like, you can create bus loops that have got privileged access, but people in cars will still drive into the bus loop if that's where they can drop people off closest to the door unless you ticket them. I mean, it's, it's just that's what people will do in front of schools, some transit agencies. It's m- maddening, but unless you make it a no-go zone for cars, they're dropping people off, they're gonna go there. It doesn't matter, which is, that's just.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, pro- again, this is not a, a thing that we. Yeah, and I guess, I mean, again, this is not a thing that we can solve right here, and I do, you know, it's important for people to bring it up. It does certainly fall into flat traffic flow as well as safety. We're looking at, but, but maybe, you know, part of the solution is having, you know, people out there helping with letting parents know exactly where to pull up, you know, what to do, you know, people with yellow gloves or something, helping, you know, helping-
Eight ball guns.
Understand what's allowed and what's not. Yep, I know, but sometimes that's, sometimes that's helpful. People respect crossing guards, right, Councilman Cohen?
No.
People in cars feel like they can go wherever their wheels will take them. Drive on the DNR canal, I've, I mean, I just can't believe where people park in Princeton. There's no barriers, and they drive into a wildlife area. It's just insane. I mean, people behind cars become mentally diseased. That's the end of this-
Okay, well, we're, um, we're far afield. Yeah, Paulie?
I was gonna say, even Princeton parents, but there might be some ways of having some soft barriers or cones in that stretch right in front of the doors, and somehow trying to clearly delineate that. And also just repeated messaging to parents.
Yep. Thank you all for that. So, Mr. Anosike, I don't know whether you're, I hope that the issues that you raised have, or wanted to raise, have been discussed, and I don't know whether we can hear you yet, or whether you've had a chance maybe to communicate through Mr. Purcell or Justin Lesko. Anything else from you, Victor? Okay, seeing. No, okay. Are there, Mr. Croker, any other witnesses that you want to?
No, I don't believe so.
Right to present, okay. And any other questions from board members or staff before we go to public comment? Okay. There are nine people in the attendees room. Now is the time, and we do have one person with their hand up, Evan Anderson. Anybody else who wishes to address the board should raise your hand virtually right now. Click on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Not seeing anybody else, but like I said, if you want to speak, please, please raise your hand now. Let's see, have we brought over Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson, I see your image on the screen. Can you activate your camera and unmute yourself? And then Mr. Muller will swear you in.
And maybe we can take the-
Take the image down, yeah, thanks. So Evan Anderson, you've been brought over to give comments to the board. Can you activate your camera and unmute yourself, please? And then Anderson might have stepped away.
Yeah, I, yes.
Hello, welcome.
Hi.
Mr. Muller will swear you in now.
If you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that the testimony about to give be the truth.
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name, spell your last name, and indicate what street you live on.
Yes, sir, Evan Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. I live on 302 John Street. I happen to be the house directly next to the basketball court, right next to, on John Street, right next to the park. My main comment is, big picture, we have this addition going on. And by the way, I have a child at Community Park School. So we have this addition going on. We have the park upgrades occurring. And I'm heartened to hear from Justin that there's been some coordination between the two. What hasn't been mentioned, at least in this meeting, is across the street, the DPW lot is proposed to become dense housing in the foreseeable future as part of the fair share rules. And I'm supportive of that. But given all these three projects occurring in a really tight area, I'd like someone to speak to, you know, the consideration for making this a harmonious area, given the three construction projects going on in the next couple of years. Doesn't sound like that much consideration has been given to the streetscape entering John Street from the school, the both, the traffic and and the walking paths. So as well as parking, which was addressed some, but if someone can comment on that, I'd appreciate it. And then I have one other minor comment.
Okay, Ian, can you stop the, the clock? Justin or Jim, whoever is the right person, can you speak to the the coordination of those three projects at all? Because I certainly take your point, Mr. Anderson, and you're right there with an addition of your own.
Yes.
Which looks great, by the way. Mr. Lesko, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know the scheduling off the top of my head right now, but we could certainly follow up with you on that. Just generally speaking, I think the schools, or the park one is gonna begin first, but that's also gonna be done in phases. And I think actually the tennis courts are going to be the last phase. So that might be furthest away from your house. But again, we could look it up, look into it and let you know what exactly is gonna happen. Maybe the schools can elaborate on their timeline next. But I know for the fourth round plan, the affordable housing that's slated to go across, that still needs to, an ordinance needs to be created by next March. A site plan would need to be reviewed, we'd need to move out our DPW. There is a requirement in state law that municipal properties that are slated to become affordable housing, shovel has to be in the ground within two years. But when you compare that with the things that I just mentioned, that sounds like that would take a lot longer than two years. But it's certainly something we can, you know, knowing full well that all these three things are going on around the same time, we can make sure there's a plan for.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Justin, can I reach out to you? Are you the most appropriate person?
I'm happy to be involved. Our engineering department would be more on the ground of what exactly is going on. So either Jim, when he's wearing a different hat, or Deanna Stockton. But please keep me in the loop if you'd like as well.
I appreciate it, and I understand these are different projects with different responsible parties and very different timelines. That is why I have a little concern that they're not gonna be planned in coordination and harmony with each one, because they're gonna be just look focused on separate projects. And I understand it takes a lot of coordination between the school board, the township, and what I believe would be the Housing Association.
Well, it's a municipal project, so I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in, because I think what Evan's talking about is not so much how to coordinate the construction, but rather how to coordinate the public realm upgrades to the public realm that recognize the new and different things that are going to be going on on these three sites. And I think it's a really good point. And I think, you know, council will be working with the developer of the housing to come up with their plans, and I will certainly bring that concern to the conversation. I have not been that involved with the park, so I'm gonna leave that to staff to follow up on. But I think, and I think that there's probably not an impact on the school's plans to upgrade, you know, the bicycle pedestrian and automobile facilities on that end of John Street. And maybe it's affecting birch as well. You know, I, it's really, I think it is a municipal task, so not so much something for the schools, but I'll try to make sure that that gets factored in. I think it's a good, it's a good point.
Just, I mean, we're only here about the school property. We can't control third parties or municipal property, but, you know, I understood there's a lot going on, but just the scope here, we're only talking about the expansion at Community Park School. But I don't know if George maybe could speak to the timeline, just for information purposes to your question.
Thank you, that was gonna be my next question.
I was gonna offer that, yeah. We're expecting, hopefully, Guatiba in January or so, or somewhere between November and January, and start construction in the spring, more importantly, and probably construction of those additions. I'm expecting it to take about two years. Yeah, maybe 21 months, okay? 24 months for the additions. There'll be renovation work as well, but that'll take place afterwards and during the construct, the new construction. So that's what I'm expect to see, okay?
Yeah, thank you for that. And just, yeah, thank you, Councilman, too. You are correct. I'm, well, I'm sure we'll have questions on the progress of the construction. I'm right now more focused on the planning of a thoughtful, harmonious streetscape, especially given that Jackson Witherspoon neighborhood has, in the past, not always been a focus of urban planning. And I have one quick comment, I'll make this really quick, but on a lighter note, the retention pond is, of course, a good idea. My comment is a four-foot retention pond in the middle of the school playground, kids will all the time go into it. If they won't do it during the school because of teachers, they will do it at night and on weekends. If it's just plants there, I assume that's not unsafe for children, but I guarantee that my son and every other kid, they see a fence, they will jump it, and they will play in it, because it'll probably be a really fun place to play.
Well, we will not throw you or your children under the bus in this public forum, but please tell them not to go over the fence. It does, however, was that the second thing that you're, that was your second point that you were, okay? So it speaks, I think, to the wisdom, maybe, of making sure there is signage on the fence around the stormwater basin to make clear to kids and parents that they should not enter.
Yeah, that will not work.
Nat, I see you too. I'm just saying, from, it, yeah. I mean, those are, you know, it can be very effective for stormwater management. It's really important. There are other ways to manage stormwater than rain gardens, but that's, that's what-
You will have, you will have kids in there every weekend. I'll see them from my, from my property, and I just hope that it'll be safe in there when they enter.
Uh, that is, that is for the schools to figure out.
Understood.
Mr. Muller, did you want to say something?
Um, how deep can the water get?
Um, probably gonna be about four feet deep at, during a 100-year storm event. So for a typical storm event, it might get one or two feet deep. It won't be that deep for anything more than probably 12 hours, or shouldn't be. It's designed as a detention base and not a retention basin, so it shouldn't hold water for longer than probably half a day.
Jim, do you have any thoughts on the safety issue? And whether anything-
The only thought I have is that when it rains in Florida, the Florida Department of Transportation sets their standard, and if it's four inches of rain, nobody should be out in the rain. So if this basin is full of water at four feet, nobody should be out in the rain at that kind of storm. So these bio-retention basins are meant to to drain in a, in a very, fairly rapid time-space. And all of our concerns about children playing in ponds, these aren't ponds. They are, they're, they're rain, they're very large rain gardens. And I think we're overthinking this. Yes, kids are gonna climb the fence, and they're going to get into it, but they're not gonna be doing it during a rainstorm. Whereas-
It should be dry most of the time.
Exactly.
And also, I should point out that we're required to design this for a much more significant storm event than has really ever happened. They're required to design for future storm events, like a theoretical, much larger storm event. So if this basin is full to the top, we might be pairing the animals, so. So.
Okay, thanks for that, thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I know the high school has a basin, kinda, I don't know the rooms in the high school that well, but kinda towards-
It's right on Walnut.
On Walnut, not the one that the board reviewed a couple of years ago that doesn't have a fence, but the other one. I imagine, or does anyone from the school side know how that compares? And if there's any issues ever, you know, I imagine a high schooler is probably gonna jump a fence more than an elementary schooler. You know, have there been any issues, or, you know, I'm sure if there was something that, like what we're worried about tonight, it would have been on the news. So does anybody on the school side know how this compares?
I mean, I'm not aware of any issues, but I mean, I think last time with respect to the detention, detention basins we were talking about, I mean, we agreed they would be locked at all times. They would be, you know, secured that, just to be clear, students are not, or children after school are not allowed to go in them, and they would be breaking the rules to do so. But we are agreeable to put up signage, just to further deter them. And we certainly, you know, don't want that to happen, but they, as Beth said, they should be dry, you know, most of the time, and they're, they're designed for 100-year storms, which hopefully we won't see for a long time, but I'm not aware of any.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had seven 100-year storms in the last 10 years.
Yeah.
Sorry to disabuse you of the sanguine comment.
But the, you know, 500 or 1,000-year storm, I mean, those are, you know, that's when that's really gonna fill up. And even then, it'll drain pretty darn fast. Or as Beth noted, you know, we'll be leading the animals two by two. Paulie Nuka?
You know, Beth has, she has designed these detention basins in accordance with all requirements and, you know, with that standard.
Which are stricter than they used to be, which is good.
Correct.
Paulie?
Uh, just to clarify, at the high school, I think the detention basin that you were referring to, which is fenced, that is actually used as in the curriculum. You know, different teachers have used it over the years for teaching biology or psychology alike. So I mean, there's potential for that detention basin in Community Park to become something that maybe teachers could use.
Absolutely.
I think we had recognized that last time with the ones we talked about.
Yeah, that's right.
Or, you know, on September 25th as well, that they could be teaching tools as well.
So any other members of the public wish to speak? Not seeing any other hands go up. So with that, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and invite any, any final questions, comments, thoughts from board members? Mr. McGowan? Board members, Mr. McGowan.
Um, maybe I missed it, but as particularly with respect to this project, was there any comment as in? Uh, green roofs, solar panels or EV stands? Or are they gonna be installed, made ready or?
Can you speak to that, Mr. Duthy or Ms. Kinderdine?
Sure, yes. Uh, there's an initiative in the district right now, a separate path of a solar study that's being done and. Maybe Andrew Harris could provide an update on that, but there there is a an effort that, as you know, the roofs have all been replaced. One of the goals is to make those roofs solar ready, and that's being studied now, but there's been changes in the solar marketplace that could have an impact on public. On public solar projects. Okay, so maybe Andrew can, I I don't know. Do you have any further on that? I know we have that consultant, Andrew.
Yeah, there's discussions going on at the board level now, the BOE level regarding putting solar on the roofs of the buildings. So hopefully there'll be more to come on that in the next few months.
There's a study going on.
And.
Outside outside the.
Outside.
Outside, I mean, outside the applications we're here for tonight, just.
Yes, and outside the referendum, right.
Um, and. Uh, when we talked at last time, um, there was an agreement to. Um, make some of your parking stalls EV ready. Are you?
Well, I'd like to clarify that because I I don't know about making a park. I I think what we said we would try to do. It would try to do if we can. I mean, we do have budget constraints and we do have electrical service size constraints too, especially since the projects are. Designs are are finished, but is to provide infrastructure within the electrical panels and gear. I think is what I had said last time, so that, yeah, at a lead or D, if there is a decision to add. Charging stations, we would have the ability to feed those charging stations from our electrical switchgear that's being installed, the new gear that we're putting in the additions. Okay?
And I think it's a. Okay, thank you for that. And I I would also note that there are EV chargers at the municipal building very close by. That frequently have open. Uh, capacity. So I, you know, that may be significant here, Mr. Cohen.
I I was just gonna comment also, this this application does not include any new parking spaces. Did, so I think it would be. Uh, less appropriate for us to be insisting on something like that here.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions from from board members? And. If there are none. Would someone like to, well, Mr. Muller, do you want to go?
Uh, I did, I did communicate with Victor Anasike and just for the record, he would like me to put on the record that. Um, there had been a discussion about potentially changing the. Uh, or creating a sidewalk. On site. Um, that would. Uh, hi- his concern was that there are, there appears to be a pathway that is created. Um, and it looks like it is because of students. Basically, uh, jaywalking. Um, and whether or not the the school district was going to go forward with. Changing the onsite sidewalk pattern to keep that from happening. Um, I believe that that. That pathway. Across the lawn that. Probably should require a sidewalk. I believe that it is, and I'd like the applicant to answer this. Um, due to students that get off the bus, not students that don't cross at crosswalks. On Witherspoon Street, but it was a concern of of Mr. Anasike. Um, that. Uh, the idea of changing the sidewalk pattern uh, near Witherspoon Street was. Because of concern of jaywalkers. So I don't know if. Patrick has anything to say about that, but if he could. Or if somebody who.
Here about the Jay, the location. Walking, is it a cross?
You know, where the where the school bus, the school buses drop off. Um, there is a sidewalk pattern on that side of Community Park School. Um, that it appears that from the pathways. Uh, across the lawn that are.
The beaten paths?
The beaten paths across the lawn, uh, makes it appear that students may be crossing Witherspoon Street, not at crosswalks. And there was a concern, there was some consideration of changing or putting in. A new sidewalk. In those pathways as as we tend to do, right? If uh, if we see a beaten path. We're going to improve that beaten path because that's the pathway of least resistance. Um, so Victor's comment that he wanted to put on record was that he was concerned that. Um, there needed to be some changes to prevent students from not crossing at crosswalks. Somebody from the school district may be able to answer that. I think I answered that question in my own understanding of the way. Uh, students arrive at school and leave school. Um, but there was some. Uh, it's something in the reports that led Victor to uh, understand that. The school district was looking at changing uh, potentially that sidewalk pattern.
Jim, I I don't really understand.
If. Beth, can you bring up the the site plan?
No, I'm I'm also a little unclear, but I I mean, I would say, I I'm sure I can speak for the school that we would be supportive of the students crossing it. At crosswalks and and would not, not recommend them cross elsewhere.
If the idea is, if the suggestion is to pave some of the beaten paths, which are not at crosswalks, that's just. And and the kids jaywalk to get to them. Basically paving those paths will increase the jaywalking.
Now, the point. The point is that the current sidewalks. I I I'm not a hundred percent sure myself what the what it is, but. Um, Beth, can you zoom in on where I'm talking about where the school bus drop off is? Yes.
It's in here. I think um, the way you phrased it, it made me, made me think that Victor was concerned that the school district was going to pave. Areas that. Uh, walkways that that students currently use and thus support the idea of jaywalking.
Yes.
Yes, so so we're not proposing any new sidewalks along the Witherspoon Street right of way. As you can see.
Across the lawn after they get off the bus.
Correct.
So what?
No, I I understand that. I understand that. I I understand that, Chairman, Madam Chair, but. The point was that somebody, I I'm not, and unfortunately Victor doesn't have audio. There was something that raised his concern about it because it was addressed in the traffic report. Uh, in in some way, and I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record that the idea of. Um, changing the sidewalk pattern wasn't going to create jaywalking because jaywalking doesn't exist right now. And that's what I wanted the school district to say, not me to say.
Across across Witherspoon is not happening because the walkers are getting off of the bus and going, you know. Straight to the front door instead of following.
And I don't want to testify on behalf of the school district.
Yeah, understood. Okay. But I but I now understand both the pattern and the. Potential for misunder- miscommunication, misunderstanding. So, yeah.
So if the school district could confirm that there's no plan to change the sidewalk pattern and encourage jaywalking, I think we got it covered.
If I if I understand.
Encourage jaywalking. Agreed.
Thank you.
Brandon, did you, were you the one to spoke? What what did you say? I didn't catch it.
No, I well, I I started to speak, but then Patrick Downey chimed in, but I was just gonna say, if I if I understand the comment, I think I I was gonna say I can. I can confirm we're we're not encouraging jaywalking and and not proposing new sidewalk, but I I don't want to cut. Patrick off or or what he.
And that is basically what Mr. Downey said, who was the traffic engineer. Is that correct, Mr. Downey?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I would tend to agree with Mr. Muller that by if we were to pave, even if they're beaten, you know, beaten paths, we were to pave them, I think we're. We would be condoning that behavior or essentially encouraging it, or at least acquiescing to it and and and, you know, and we're not. We're not proposing that.
Okay, so before. Well, I guess, uh, well, be- before a motion, Mr. Muller, you want to? Go over any? Comments in the only, the the. I I know that, or I think I recall that the. Um, that the schools said that they were amenable to the suggestions in Deanna's memo. Is that correct? And um, and that they were inclined to provide. Plenty, air quotes of. Bike parking, which was strongly encouraged by. Or supported by members of the board as well. Were there other? Conditions, Mr. Lesko, or David, I see you moving.
I I just want to sort of correct your. Characterization of the bike parking. They said that they would provide bike parking in accordance with our ordinance. And possibly, possibly more.
And possibly more because they agree it's a. I get, I don't want to put words in your mouth and possibly more period, full stop or.
Well, I think what it would, my recollection is that Patrick spoke and he said, we we would agree certainly to provide the. At least the minimum number that would be required by the ordinance, but may go above that, and I think it was something to that effect.
That's correct.
So that's, yeah, that's doesn't need to be a condition then. Yeah, uh, Justin?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I think one thing that we probably want to just memorialize for the record. Is that there is going to be a fence around that bio retention basin. As well as those fences and gates from the courtyards. And again, that's really just for the record, uh, because the school said they were gonna do it. Um, and the one other thing I would add, um, I know there was a little. Discussion about this before, but those lights on the bike path. Um, and I think there was a comment of we're not gonna make a condition out of that, so feel free to just completely shoot this down. But I I don't know if for the record you want to put something of, you know, the board recommends that municipal staff and. School staff work on that, um, just so that doesn't go by the wayside. I, not that I'm saying it will. Because I think our staff is is well aware of of that, but I don't think it could hurt to. Acknowledge that having a an eight foot fence on one side and at least a six foot on the other, um, there should be some lighting there.
Yeah.
But again, that's the board's, you know, it's up to you.
Right, and I I mean, I think that we can be. I mean, I I I. I'd be fine with being explicit that we're not asking or expecting the board. To install the lighting, but rather to work with and cooperate with the municipality as. You know, as this improvement is built and make sure that. Um, lighting adequate to. Ensure safety is. Provided for, is that? Does that, does that sound right to you as a municipal official?
I. I mean, what I felt I heard Jim say was that he sort of felt it. It didn't need to involve the schools that will bring it up with the rec department. And we'll handle it on our side, but Jim.
The path, the path is being added to the school district's project. On behalf of the municipality and the recreation department, I think it behooves us. Uh, in the municipality to provide the lighting that's necessary. I don't think it should be a condition of anything on the school district. And if you want to put that in the minutes, that's fine too.
The thought by by David was just that the the school board, the board, uh, the school would cooperate.
Absolutely, yeah, and 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 they've indicated that. Simply by putting in the path.
Yes, yes. Thank you for the path. Yeah.
I think we could cer- we can certainly agree to discuss and cooperate. I I think that some discussion was that the light may be on the municipal property and I. We obviously can't control that.
There there there's more to this path than than just the construction of it as well. We 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 need to have cross easement. Uh, language, there's there's legal language and the council has to ma- take action and so. It's not a slam dunk that the path is going in, but. We.
But this is a big step forward.
It's a big step forward, yes, and and we will, and the municipality and the school district will work cooperatively to. Put in a safe path for. Um, the public.
So maybe now the condition, we'll just note it somewhere in the resolution.
Yep. Great. Anything else, Mr. Muller?
I'm just going over the, uh, let let me just pin down with respect to the path, so we don't. Justin's saying we don't have to put anything in the resolution, which would be fine. That would, would that include, we're not going to say anything about lighting. On the path because at one point about a minute ago, that the, um, I was gonna put in the condition that said the school board, the school would cooperate.
It it does not need to be a condition. It could be mentioned in the resolution that the. The path is on the plan and the municipality and schools will. Ordinate. Uh, but it is not, not in the form of a condition.
Yeah, ju- I mean, just just for the record, again, it doesn't just, I, my understanding, I I believe we added the the path and the fence at the municipality's request.
Right, we understand.
Right.
We, that was, you know, added after the scope was determined, but we're, you know, we're happy to. Work together, you know.
The the only additional conditions, uh, safety signage on the fence around the retention basin. Then going to the memo from. Justin, Derek and Jim. Five point oh two. It's 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 a path again. And void existing. The tree protection zone, staff supports this effort, the school should consult with the municipal arborist. During construction to ensure existing trees are maintained to the maximum extent possible. We want to put that in, I think it would be Jim rather than municipal arborist.
Oh, that that's standard procedure on any project. Our municipal arborist is in involved on single family homes all the way up to Princeton University major applications. I don't think it's. I mean, it doesn't need to be a condition, but it's just standard operating procedure.
We're comfortable with that, we won't make it a condition. And then minor grading is proposed within the lawn area to the west of the school for drainage purposes. Again. Schools, thi- this is what the memo says, should consult the municipal arborist during construction to ensure existing trees are maintained to the maximum extent. Practicable. Do we want to put that in?
Uh, Ms. Kinderdine said they were amenable to that, I believe, so yeah.
Yep. Okay. And then the. The stuff that's in the. The report by Deanna, and I think that is it.
Okay, thank you. Um, would some? Anyone on the board like to make a motion?
Why not?
Mr. Cohen. Moving approval of the, uh, I'm looking for my exact wording on the. Conditional use authorization. Go ahead, Mr. Muller.
That was it, just granting conditional use authorization with the conditions articulated.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded by Owen O'Donnell. Um, Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Captain Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Wilson?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, Ms. Nuka.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Right, well, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, thank you very much. And um thanks to the school board members who, as of a few minutes ago anyway, uh several were um in the attendees room. We appreciate all your work on this and um look forward to uh all these projects um happening and going off without a hitch and um I think if there's no further business, Mr. Cohen?
I move to adjourn.
The second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you again, everybody. See you next time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night.